...have to miss school and they get the direct contact there. It's been used very well in other states and it's something that Connecticut's just catching up to. So that's something that we were able to pass. We also passed massive legislation on drug pricing, on opiate addiction, and the biggest one that came out of public health, I will say, is the reformation of the Whiting Forensic Institute at CDH Hospital that I had actually taken the lead on. Connecticut Valley Hospital is a huge organization, campus that used to house the Whiting Forensic Facility for which we've had 10 people arrested for abusive patients and 31 walked out, also abusive patients. The nurses there were making close to $250,000 a year abusing patients. It's unacceptable, these patients. The one particular patient, it was on videotape, non-verbal, in the fetal position, abused at night from 9:00 o'clock at night till 7:00 in the morning for 24 out of 30 days of the 30 days taped that we have. And it is endemic and systematic within that organization. So that's something that I thought was abhorrent, unacceptable, took the lead on it. And we will now be separating these two facilities. Whiting Forensic will be a standalone hospital. It will be licensed by the Department of Public Health. It was not a licensed hospital before. It will have an oversight committee that will oversee the everyday running of it. It will have to report back to the task force. The task force will be made up of completely independent individuals. No one will be a state employee, no one who worked for any of the departments. They will be experts in their field and they will also look at having an independent inspector general for the CDH Hospital. So that's something that our whole public health committee worked on. It's really transforming the way that we deliver services to those who are most vulnerable in the state of Connecticut. It's never been done before. There was a lot of pushback, but we got it done. And we passed it. Everybody who now works routinely as a mandated reporter. We will also be looking at the, it's called a PSRB, those are the folks that review whether somebody can leave or not. There are people that have been found guilty of a crime because of insanity. They've been sent to Whiting Forensic and their sentence was 10 years and they're still there 25 years later. So what's happening, according to the public defenders, is people are choosing to go to jail with mental illness over going to a forensic hospital because they know at least if they go to jail, they can get help. Perhaps they can get help, but at least they can get out where if you go to Whiting Forensic, you, it says sentence is pretty much forever. So the PSRB will be something that will be looked at. The task force has been assigned to look at certain things, bullying, intimidation, retribution by the folks that are running the facility is one of the things that they're going to be looking at. The idea of the inspector general, the idea whether the people that are, it has some board, whether that board has the right makeup, whether the people that are on the board are the right folks. Anybody who's working at Whiting will have direct access to the task force, so they can speak to them directly. So it really is transforming the way that that hospital system will be run. And the reason why it's so important is because if we didn't do that and step up, the state was at risk to losing $55 million of Medicaid services. So there's been some significant work. Those are just a few of the things in public health, but a lot was done in a very compressed period of time. And I'll let Ann talk about the committees that she was on. We, I have a lot more to say, so we won't, I'll let you go.
Well, there weren't anything as detailed as you've just described. I'm on public safety, children's, and human services. Children's Services is made up primarily of issues with DCF. So we hear a lot of those issues. One of the big ones made up this past session was the individual who died in his home last year. So there's been a lot of, we listened to a lot of investigative testimony regarding those issues. Public Safety probably the largest one we had was concerning the casino and then the gun range. Those are the probably the two largest ones that we heard. And then, and Human Services, there was a variety. That does encompass some DCF and some variety of things. I think that there's many issues that we're looking at as a state with the DCF. There's a lot of things that, on both sides of the aisle, I think, have big concerns. So we've been, we've, there's a lot of issues that come forward to us. Nothing big that maybe has hit the news, other than that young boy who died. But there's a lot of smaller things that go on that I think lead to these bigger issues. So we're, we hear those things. I don't know if anybody has questions. I know someone that asked me about transportation and I said, "Ask Heather" because she probably knows a little bit more about specifically, because Heather's on public health and she's on the appropriation. She has a better...
I'm not on transportation, but I can tell you how we fund it.
No, not transportation. Right, but you on the appropriation, doesn't say. So she understands what areas perhaps that I may have missed, because that document was 100 pages of the budget, so.
I will say one other thing about some of the things in Human Services that we have been able to do. It was a public health bill, but it talked about, I'm sure you've heard about those who have maybe autism or ADD left in the emergency rooms. Have you maybe heard about this? Where parents of adult age or adults that they're caring for who have no respite, the state has not been able to place these folks who need significant care. So many times, parents just have nowhere to go and they leave the individual at the emergency room. And during the budget, I keep telling you how many calls I got saying, "You have to help us. This person's been there for 30 days." I have a woman who's been there for 42 days. So they leave them in the ER and then the ER is, of course, the most expensive place to take care of anybody. But they are trying to figure out what to do with these individuals because they're not sick, but they have no place to go. So one of the bills that we passed was an emergency placement bill so that we define what an emergency is and we have allocated funds available to help those who are in that kind of crisis situation so that they can be placed. And we have started a pilot program with an organization called the ARC so that we can look at other suitable housing for those individuals. There's many that are left in sort of a group home scenario which really could move on to be more independent. So that should hopefully help this situation, but it's becoming chronic. We had a 19-year-old autistic boy in my local hostel for 52 days. He was 6'4", about 350 pounds and his mom was like 85 pounds and an older woman, she couldn't handle him. He tended to be violent, but he was in our ER for that period of time and that's not a good place for something to be. So it was a bill that we had to really address. As far as transportation, you have a specific question on transportation, but just for transportation in general?
Funding.
The funding for anything in particular or just overall?
Basically, the funding to Neacog, because there's still a question of getting funding for the transportation from the county field. And we, we've gone through this, like round and round thing where, you know, you talk to Neacog, you talk to arts-like women, you talk to this one, and they send you in one direction and then they send you back to another direction and then they say, "You're going to be in one." You're forced to buy the end of the deal. And we know that DCTC is funding like half a plan or up here or here, if it exists. However, you talk to the money for transportation up here till around 9:00 in the afternoon and you call in to set up transportation and you can't get a ride for two weeks. And then they say, or you say, "Okay, we'll have it Thursday, Thursday, Thursday." And we say, "Well, we're not going to give you that." And it's like, "Well, you're going, you know, what do you want me to do that? Because you won't bring the public transportation and you're bringing that." And then it was, you know, and then the paratransit is so limited.
Right.
So we, the question came up that our town has appropriation through the department or the vehicle that is used for the senior transportation, but it's appropriated through the renovation department. So why, why under APA law, yes, I realize that they get a grant from that funded by the older married and grand, however, what I don't understand is why they can't even for the nominal fee try to work with handicapped people who have language, not that many of us, even that difficult transportation part, do something. They can't, they can't, I don't know if you would say that, if you don't have transportation on the pass station.
I don't, I can't answer the question as far as public transportation to Plainfield. I don't think that's on the table as far as something. But I can look into the, into the paratransport and find out where that is.
So what was the, I apologize. First of all, I apologize for being late.
Well, you know, I do know that our first selectman has been having meetings, Chris Murphy, everybody's meeting with Richard Blumenthal.
Oh, good luck with that.
They're supposed to be having some kind of launch or project or a pilot program for public transportation. But of course, we're not giving it time on that either, we're going to ask over and over and over.
So does the town, Plainfield, they contract with Neacog through services?
That's in, supposedly in negotiation.
So they're in the process.
It's held up with Neacog.
So you're, you're essentially asking about extending the Neacog bus line into, into Plainfield, making a regular stop?
We've been trying to do that for two or three years now. We voted the money in, it's held up at state level.
Here's the interesting part. The ones that give stops at the, at Plainfield line, basically, and then SEAT starts back up for the Jewish city going down into the London. We're stacked in the middle and we can't get anything, basically. It's like we're on...
I had heard that. They didn't want to spend the money there for that. Is there any truth to that?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You just didn't want to spend the money or the state did? Or the board just decided that wasn't a way to spend our money right now?
I wouldn't say that we decided that. I think some of the cuts in the Governor Malloy's, you know, cutback or holdbacks affected a lot of the transportation money.
How come you guys don't know about that?
Because the budget is about 4,000 pages long and you can't know every single line in detail.
Do you know anything about Plainfield?
Yes, I know a lot about Plainfield.
I'm just curious, because your town, you're in the state?
I'm here all the time. I'm in this quarter all the time.
I see you every now and then, you pop in and make little statements, then you're gone.
So anyways, I just...
I would disagree with that, sorry.
If I can take a moment, just, I do apologize for being late. I was at a function in, in the other part of the district and I do apologize for coming in late and I don't know what I missed, but I'm sure I get updated. My name's Kathy Philcheck, state representative, 45th district. And I'm kind of glad that we have this nice intense conversation going on. One thing I can tell you that certainly the transportation budget is one of the biggest conversations. When we hear about the transportation budget a lot, it's predicated on some, one particular side of the argument, really wanting to lean towards tolls to solve some of the exact problems that we're talking about. And I think we had a lot of rich negotiation over that over the last year or so. Certainly, I think the budget that we came out with had some, some holes in it. We had every, to your point, we didn't have every answer, but we did the best that we could for the entire 169 towns. I think we're being one of the representatives. So I hear what you're saying and it's, I'm glad you hear Chris Murphy and some of the federal, I'm sure Joe Courtney, who's a great asset for us, is involved in that. But the money that we have in this budget is the money we have.
But how can we surround the town with any of the 44?
Well, you know, they've all been cut. Transportation and especially when it comes to like, I know I was on Transportation Council in Southeastern Connecticut with SEAT and they've been cut consistently over the years. I mean, I sat on the, as a first selectman, every year we had more and more money cut.
But does the SEAT bus run through to its city, Kathy?
It does.
It does, and it's from Plainfield.
No, exactly.
Does it run, is the busing up in Daniel City, Plainfield?
But to that, to that same point, SEAT, and I can tell you that we talked about SEAT coming to Plainfield, that would have been a negotiated piece through your town leadership that just hadn't happened. So Neacog has the control up here and they're the ones that kind of lead the conversation going forward. I don't argue with you. I'm saying that, you know, you've got your local politics and you have us, so it's got to blend together.
Was there a vote in the State House, either side, for funding the transit district into Plainfield?
That, that wouldn't have been our...
I'm just asking if there...
That would have been Neacog and Neacog going after the funds and your representative, your, your elected officials here locally would have been negotiating that. As far as we're concerned, no.
So there was no vote at, at the state level for funding for the Neacog extended into Plainfield?
A lot of this whole time, we had DCTC that Neacog did get funding from the state level and...
But they need a contract with your town, right? So each one of the towns in Southeastern Connecticut that belong have a contract with the, the transportation. So if your town wants that contract, your town can do that. So that's maybe the, I'm not trying to, you know, pass the buck, but that's a conversation that needs to take place.
Just trying to clarify, they said they can't go into Plainfield, just trying to figure out why they can't.
But that's going to be a relationship between your town leadership and Neacog. And if that happens across the state of Connecticut?
I don't know, Neacog sets up a three-way split between our town, then and the DOT with the state.
Oh, DOT has funding sources, so they're exactly active.
And our town was on board last time and Neacog was on board, they agreed to each the split. And DOT said, "No, we've no explanation else to walk." $13,000.
We voted for a proportion of the money for it, but a motion.
And so did Neacog.
So in all fairness to the conversation, we do have a state, or a selectman link here. He knows, he sits in the, these are conversations we'd take, please, with your local authority, meaning your, or a selectman, or a finance. And then it would go to Neacog and there would be a contract signed for those situations. But you're right, DOT does fund those. Not trying, I'm not trying to pass, but I'm just trying to be clear, that's all. Sorry.
Ma'am, have you contacted Neacog?
Yes, I have.
And what, the answer, the answer was what?
They basically said they were all for it and they didn't the money for the funding the last time this went on for both. It was the DOT that said, "No," they came back with a note. So they wanted it re-reposed. Our selectman is saying that she's working with Chris Philcheck, she's had several meetings. They were supposed to be having a meeting with Chris Murphy, it's supposed to be some kind of a pilot project, but we have no timeline and we're not really meaningful with it. John Prue has gone through and I mean, I've, we've been on this for over a year.
So, so, remember at the coffee shop, this is a transportation guy?
So you've had conversations with Kathy Tenter?
Yes.
Okay. And you're basically on hold. I can understand your frustration. It's just, it's just that I think, as long as she is in contact with Neacog and they're, at least they're negotiating, I know that sounds like a very poor answer, but it may be, until something is settled, that's what you're going to wind up with. I hope for your sake that it gets settled fairly soon.
So we'll, we'll reach out. I definitely will call Kathy tomorrow and see if we can set a meeting where we can, we'll keep you looking. We have your information from the times we met and talked, so. At least maybe we can all get a room in here with their perspective.
It is important because we're 48% below poverty level in this town. I've been out speaking to residents about this for over a year. We have people that are educated, that fall on the illness or something, lose their vehicles, they can even without a town go get a job.
It's, it's definitely, and you know, each town, and not to tell you a bedtime story here, but Plank knows in his community, Grizzle, you know, we all kind of roll our sleeves up and do our thing, right? So I know in our place, Senior Center picks up the slack. You know, we put someone in a van or a bus and they drive people here and there when we can.
Well, and this is, this is the part that you missed me before.
I apologize.
That's okay. The thing is, is that our Senior Center should be picking it up. Our, pardon, the, the money, the town puts in money as well as the old, to bring for older marriages. But if the town puts in money, doesn't that mean that because it's funded through the recreation department, that that should be a loophole for the DA to come in and say, "Okay, this is where, you know, those of you that, that are handicapped, we need to give you something." Because right now we have nothing.
Yeah, I can understand. That, that again, I'm not trying to push it back on the local for that, that voting, but we'll assist you with that. We'll definitely get to talk to John Philcheck, who I'm sure will answer the phone anytime he goes.
Unless you all become fully operational and that, fine, I'd be glad to do that.
I remember you telling me you liked that ride, so.
That's a good day. And please, I'm not getting like that, so.
Well, we have a district, we follow the southern end of the valley, the northeast.
Right, I have, so I have Walmart Town, Sterling and...
This is not just a Plainfield problem, it's a northeast, a southeast problem. It's a lot of goals for the northeast to the south.
Right. So how we did...
We need to find out if Kathy has signed an agreement, that's the first thing.
That's what I was trying to say, exactly.
She has not reached out to any of us.
Not yet.
So I will call her. I had, I called her up, so I certainly, we can call her and find out where it is. And the commissioner for DOT is in my office probably once a week about projects. I'm happy to talk to him about it. If I, if this first selectman is not reaching out telling us what she needs, it's hard to know. But we certainly can follow and get back to you guys.
I'm honest.
I wonder what's there by the public life in Killenley.
I'm not going to do that.
I didn't get it.
I'll let you drive me there, anyways. Did I miss anything else?
We were talking about the budget, about our different committees, perhaps some of the bigger issues, I imagine.
Transportation.
So... None of us run the transportation committee.
We are, most likely, we most likely will be going back in the session if the governor signs off and has us go in to discuss the online gaming issue.
Or sports betting.
Sports betting online. It was a federal lawsuit, I guess, in New Jersey, a couple of states. That looks like we'll probably be going in the session one more time so it's not over to determine whether or not we're going to enact online betting and gambling in Connecticut. The numbers look pretty phenomenal when you look at them, but I wonder about saturation when the entire country starts to do this. So I often refer to Connecticut as becoming the Potter'sville from its wonderful life version. We're relying on gambling, marijuana, and everything else to solve our problems versus only just being physically responsible. So, but you can leave on that.
Kevin, could I ask a question about the crumbling foundations in the middle of the state?
Yes.
What kind of legislation has been passed, if any, about that?
So...
Maybe a little, you know, background might be needed.
Yep, I think it's important to have the background. And so when you look at the communities affected by the crumbling foundation, it, it covers anywhere as far as way up by Mfield area, Stafford Springs, obviously, because that's where the plant was that was actually producing the product. And this goes back into the early, mid-'90s when this product was actually being produced. And the interesting part about it, when you, you know, the, the state doesn't have a really good retention for their documents. And I think Heather's, it was exactly what I'm saying, and Ann, I tried to get every document that went back into the early '90s. I FOI, you know, put in a request through our legislative office and those documents have been destroyed. So the people who originally started seeing this happen to their foundations, saying that Stafford Springs, Windsor, East Windsor, some of the smaller communities that are affected, started to negotiate or talk to then, Richard Blumenthal, who was the Attorney General. And it sort of in a way looks to me like this was one of a classic case of the kicking of the can by government and nothing was really done. But when you see it go from 100 complaints to 300 complaints to over 3,000 locations throughout Connecticut, right, and 3,000, at least 3,000, right? And we can all have a difference on how we approach this, but I'll say to you, quite certainly, I made my decision in supporting crumbling foundations based on these facts, that we could see communities having people walk away from their homes. And we can see places, small towns, actually going basically into receivership because they would not be able to afford the tax base to keep their towns functioning. That's how many people are affected by this. And the actual number is unknown. I think we'll look at some stats together, we had a lot of public hearings on this. Some of the stats are really concerning. It could be 30,000, if not more, foundations when you add in condominium complexes. These are people that live in multiple units. So, listen, I don't want taxes. I campaigned on it and all this and holding taxes and I never want to raise taxes and never want you to, any of us to have to pay more. But if we don't do this now and at least address the issue, it's going to get worse and we're going to pay more taxes than any way or another on it. So that's why I sort of stayed behind. It's been an ongoing process and it was not dealt with. And kudos to people who bring it up like they did this year, I'm sorry.
Is insurance...
I'm sorry.
Are they covering any of these?
So it's a great conversation. You know, the insurance companies themselves have some phenomenal lobbyists who are defending their...
Because they're getting off the hook and they are paid a premium.
Correct.
By everybody.
Correct.
Everybody pays a premium.
Agreed.
On insurance. And we're talking about taxes covering this?
Right, right. And so we're not getting really...
It seems interesting.
And so, you know, you're going to, you're going to hear semantics of the definition of taxes on this. Because the fee that you're paying extra for your insurance per year, right, your homeowner's insurance? It's going, it's a tax, right? So I voted for a tax. I'm going to sit and look you in the face and tell you I did, okay? Whatever. Move on, because that was the only solution that was at $12? $12. It was a very quick way for us to start the, start the ball rolling. But there is a commission that's been formed out of Prague in Hartford and it has some independent folks that have been assigned to this commission and their job is to independently review and look at the issues that took place during this entire process and come back with reports to the legislature. And they've been continuously doing that to us. The reality is, the insurance company has to be at the seat, banks have to be there and government has to be there. Because government failed. It, maybe it was a bust rate, but it was government that was in place at the time. And so that's sort of why, you know, we're going in this direction. But you know, 12 bucks, 12 bucks is a lot. I don't want to pay a dollar more, but 12 bucks to me was a quick way for us to get this moving because it's been stalled for way too long.
What was the figure, Kevin, for repairing one foundation in place?
So it's an interesting question, because I, yeah, I would say...
Is it a range?
Yeah, I mean, we've heard numbers from, the ability for us to raise a foundation up, some were slap remedies, some were actually rebuilding the entire foundation, so go anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000.
Astronomical.
Per foundation. And I got to tell you, and I know, we, you know, by the way, some Plainfield homes have been identified as possibly being a part of this. And I don't have the list of, you know, every home that's been included, but there has been some Plainfield foundations that were on the list.
Ed, did all of you agree with the crumbling foundations that we should have the...
I did not support it.
I did not support it, no.
Okay.
So this is one of those, I try to use a rule in life in general of six out of 10. If we can agree on six out of 10 things, we're probably on the same page. I was not on the same page with folks here, but I, I think I look at it a different way and perceive it as some government responsibility. Sometimes government has to step up. You know what I mean? Sometimes we have to own up to what we've been involved in.
So I was on the public safety committee when we heard testimony. And I agree with Kevin that government failed, the people of, with these situations, but from my perspective, I argued that we needed to have a full investigation from the day it started up till now. There's been no full investigation. We're kind of, we, there were all kinds of ideas thrown up at us, up at the, different kinds of bills come up. One was one idea and one was the other. This is, was the end-all solution that they came up with. And some of the reasons why I didn't like it was it only puts the onus on, on anybody who has homeowner's insurance. So those are the only people that are pitching in, okay? I believe that there should have been a full investigation from day one to now so that we could identify some of the people that Kevin spoke, spoke about. Bring the bankers to the table, bring the insurance companies to the table, bring government to the table. When, early on, Attorney General Blumenthal learned about this issue, I believed it should have been handled head-on then. It was kind of brushed under the, under the carpet and kind of ignored and it wasn't addressed then. So none of us really...
In all fairness, John Rolton's there too. And I'll say it like it is because he wasn't off.
Well, I'm just, I'm only identifying him because that was with the testimony that we heard in public safety. So we don't really have an accurate account of when the first case came out to now and who the players are in terms of who participates, but I believe that we needed to have a full investigation and address it head-on in that manner. They had the $12 charge added to the insurance policies. It's not for everybody, it's only for people who have homeowner's insurance. So they're the only peoples, the people that are going to be participating. They've already scooped out from that fund, another pool of money for Waterbury who had some sinkholes in their homes. So that's another issue that they're going to be taking money out from. So not all the crumbling foundations is going to even be privy to that pool. There's no end date to that, that charge. There was no promise that that, that wouldn't even be what we call, what we call when we take money out of our...
Sweeping.
Sweeping.
Sweeping. We weren't even promised that it wasn't going to be swept. So often we see a charge added on to something. We see it all the time. We pay an extra amount of money. The first year it's $10, it goes into the intended pool. The next year it's eight. The next year it's six. The next year it's four. There's not, we don't even know that that's going to all continue to go in there. So in my view, we needed to do something much different and really look at the situation, evaluate it. And I thought we should be a little bit more thorough in terms of how we address it. And nobody in Plainfield has complained to me. So if there's some issues in Plainfield, nobody has called me on the issue. So to my knowledge, there hasn't been anybody in my district in 44, for Killingley and Plainfield. But those were the concerns that I had regarding the problem. And there were a lot of ideas put on the table, but there's, it's a hurry-up thing. Hurry, hurry, hurry. Let's do something at the last minute. And instead of really looking at a problem and addressing the way it needs to be addressed, we throw together something at the last minute that, again, I don't, I just don't see it as really doing a lot and/or pulling everybody to the table to address, and just requiring that the homeowners, the only people that are going to be paying on this are the homeowners in the state of Connecticut. So that was where I was with that. I don't know, Heather, I don't know if you've had another.
I think you've sent it off.
Okay.
Senator Summers.
Except the fact that it won't, it's not even going to cover.
It's not even going to start to cover.
No.
And, you know, that came to the table, engineers that wanted to come up with a plan that was cost-effective to fix these foundations. They talked about, I know Senator Mike Franz talked about some engineering that he had gone to Quinnipiac, apparently, or one of the colleges to put together some structural plans that could effectively fix the homes for a very small amount of money. There was no effort made in that, in that part. We had talked about that a little bit, I know, out of committee from Public Safety. So, so many things, I think, really, to put together a good plan weren't done. And I'm concerned that this is a very, very poor, ineffective plan and won't even touch the problem like Senator Summers.
Yeah.
Didn't, when Blumenthal was Attorney General, did they get complaints? Isn't there an investigation filed within that office?
So that's when I referred back to retention of documents. The state of Connecticut doesn't have a, I think actually, local towns, seven-year retentions.
Seven years.
10-year retention. But actually, at the state level, we were not able to get any documents when we put in our FOI request. But, you know, and Ann brings up a very good point. And I think what we need to do is revert back to last year, the forming of this, this committee, this independent CROB sort of driven committee that took place, the hearings last year. We're hoping, I don't think these were hoping, their direction was to do exactly what she's referring to, is to do the thorough investigation and bring it back to the legislature for further, you know, what do we need to do next? And our professionals in the insurance industry, banking, structural engineers on that committee, and you can look it up, it's online, you can refer to their minutes and where they are.
You know, and just really quickly, so often we do that up there. It's this mishmash of throwing something at, like, you know, throwing something at the hole and trying to temporarily fill it, instead of really doing something constructive to take care of a problem. And, you know, I'm really opposed to that. I think that we really need to get together as a legislature and work through the problem. And now, I think, my fear is that we've done this, and they're going to say, oh, we've already helped you out. You're all set. And we haven't even really addressed the problem. So, in my view, we did it very, very poorly, and there's probably going to be a lot more coming out about it. And I don't know about in Plainfield and Killingley, but perhaps in the other towns. They're saying they have no idea how many structures are impacted.
And I know we're going to go to you next, but I will say that one of the reasons, I remember, we had an explosion of correctional facility being built in the state of Connecticut. And in the Summers area, where this, this, you know, the project was being used, I'm kind of wondering when it's going to start to really surface. And those are all state-owned properties that are being used purposes for correctional facilities.
Yeah.
So I just, it's unknown what the number is going to be. I'm sorry.
My question's for Senator Summers. I'm quite curious as to your reasoning behind your vote of support for the National Popular Vote Interstate Compact.
Okay.
I'll just put out my feeling. I want to hear your justification afterwards. This, that was one of the bills circulating that really troubled me. And those that supported, it really should give everybody a great cause for concern. I know that a lot, there's a lot of conjecture out there about trying to make sure every vote counts, and that this is supposed to be a way to remove the Electoral College because it's seen as an inefficient or incorrect way of electing our president. Given the last 20, 30 years of the executive branch of our federal government becoming more and more powerful, perhaps disproportionately so, the idea that you would want to turn that office's electors over to the complete period of the democratic process, which would probably favor cities instead of swing states. There's at least a history of swing states changing. Cities, not so much. So I'd like to have a rebuttal.
Sure.
Probably your reason I want to give you a fair shake at this.
Sure. Well, I think the National Popular Vote is complicated. And I think that you can't look at just the title and think that you understand exactly what it means. I sat with other Republicans and studied the National Popular Vote, which is different than a constitutional amendment. The compact of states is different. A constitutional amendment would make this a federal election law, which I would never support. But the compact is by state. And if you look at, there's been a lot of misinformation about that it's not constitutional, which is incorrect. It is absolutely constitutional under Article II of the Constitution. It says each state shall appoint in such a manner as the legislature may direct their electors. This is not getting rid of the Electoral College in any way, shape, or form. What it's getting rid of is winner-take-all at the state level. And if you want to go back to history, you know, our first election that we had, we picked the president by just a few people. There was governors who voted. There was congressional counties that were set up that voted. There was a special presidential elector set up in states. So this was never discussed during the formation of the Constitution. So for people that say it's not constitutional, that's just absolutely inaccurate. What this does is it changes the dynamics so that every vote does count, because you're talking about margins. And some of the different things that I really liked about the National Popular Vote are two things. Number one, our electoral college right now, currently, is based on the census numbers. And the census numbers counts every head. That means illegals and non-residents as far, as well as citizens. The National Popular Vote is based on the number of citizens. It's not by head. That's a big difference. So when you look at the numbers, the state of California gets seven additional electoral votes just because you're counting heads. Also, it may not sound like what we think of, but the more and more we looked into this, when I first looked into this, I thought this was like a communist plot. But then the more you learn, you realize that the top 200 cities in the country make up only 15% of the popular vote. So at first I thought, oh, my God, just California and this one are going to be able to decide who our president is. But when you look at the numbers, that's actually not the case. So the idea is that even the president said, and I actually have a quote that he said, "I would rather have a popular election," but it said it would be a different campaign. So people look at this as sort of an anti-Trump exercise, which it is not, because Trump would have campaigned differently, as would everyone else in an election if it was a popular vote. The idea that behind the National Popular Vote is that you have really 12 states that are deciding who the president is. Of a billion dollars that was spent in the last election, 700 million was spent in 12 states. If one of those states, one of the big ones, based on what we're seeing now with immigration and higher birth rates of certain minorities, turns and goes from red to blue, or red to, yeah, goes from red to blue, the Republican Party will never have an opportunity to elect a president ever again. Because right now, the way the Electoral College is set up, in a presidential election, the Republicans start out with 102 electoral votes, based on 38 years of states voting the same way. The Democrats start out with 242 electoral votes. So the Republicans have to make all that up, and then some. Where one of those larger states swings, it's over for the Republican Party. And I don't think it's good as a nation to have one party, regardless of how you feel whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, have that kind of advantage in a presidential election. So if you go back to winner-takes-all on the national level, what that means is regardless of parties, if Connecticut's vote, I know my vote has not mattered in 38 years in Connecticut, because no matter who I vote for, this state is always, those electoral votes are always going to a Democrat, to the Democratic president. But if every vote counted, my vote here in Connecticut could help the vote in Minnesota, which could help the vote in Oklahoma. So an overall look at it, you're talking about margins then. That can make the difference, and I think that's more fair. And we were talking to Republicans within our caucus. We all looked at it and said, this is a different way of looking at how presidential elections could go in the future. Now, there's a few things that are important to realize about the compact. Number one, this may never happen in my lifetime, ever. Because you're going to need 270 electoral votes of states just to even kick in. The other thing about the National Popular Vote is you can pull out at any time. You don't have to stay in. If a state decided that's not for them, they can pull out. Another thing is that I just think, from looking at the numbers, I think it's important that every state does have a voice. And when you look at someone, I think this is a good example, New York, there's 1.6 Republicans that vote in a governor election in New York. Guess how many vote in a presidential election? 500,000. Because they know their vote doesn't matter, because it's automatically going to go to one party or the other. And probably folks in red states feel the same way. So that's why I think this deserves a look. It doesn't mean that it's going to go that way. Nobody's taking away anybody's rights or vote. It's a different way to look at it. And within the compact of states, they all have to be identical, and they're not random. So what that means is an opportunity for each states, each of the states to come together. We could come back when Connecticut decides to cast their electoral votes by congressional district. I think that would be a great idea. Eastern Connecticut has never had a voice. It's always what happens in Fairfield County. So I think it's an opportunity for us, number one, to have a seat at the table, because whether I or the other Republicans that supported this or not voted for it, it was going through, because the Democrats have the majority, and they were going to push it through. So I want to have a seat at the table, number one. And number two, it gives us an opportunity to have a conversation about what, how we want our presidential elections to look like in the future. And I think it would be a mistake to, number one, not have a seat at the table. I think you absolutely need to have a seat at the table. But number two, I think that we should look at this, and it's not fair, I think, for our future generations to not take a look at this. If the swing states that are so important, the 12, where really 12 states are electing our president, we don't have an opportunity to have a conversation. Because if one swings one way or the other, to have a two-party system where one party automatically has guaranteed the presidency is not what I think our forefathers have in mind when they set up our Constitution. Now, yet, Trump is an anomaly. He's, you know, defied all odds, so to speak, where blue states went red. But I think if you look at the history, it's been 38 years of the same. That says something pretty significant. And if you look at, you know, between immigration, you look at birth rates, you look at how certain states are trending. I know you've heard about the blue wave. If you look at those larger states, that's the blue wave that they're talking about. So I think it definitely deserves to be looked at. And again, this may never happen in my lifetime.
I would have to vehemently disagree with your points there real quick. The first point, the fact that this is multiple states entering an interstate compact, which it is openly advertised as, means that at best, I feel this is going to end up in the court of law, because it's an interstate compact, which is prohibited in the Constitution, designated to replace an established federal procedure. So I have a difference of opinion, but I believe ultimately, there's people far more intelligent than I that would get this to the higher courts. So constitutionally, I don't think it's valid. Secondly, the 50 states formed this union. We are, of course, each state can establish its own way of proportioning its electoral voters, its own electors.
They can choose to select. The proportion is listed in Article II, Section 1, Clause 234.
But what this bill seems to do, rather than specifically say Connecticut is going to appoint them this way, it's tying our electors to follow what other states and the rest of the population decides to do. I can't think of a more disempowering action for tiny Connecticut than that bill they just supported there. We're 50 states in a union, and it's set up so that California can't necessarily tell Connecticut how it's going to conduct its business, or what presidential candidate they're going to support. I also, I find your statement that you feel that your vote hasn't counted in Connecticut to really just, it's a terrible statement to make.
It's how I feel, and it's immediately.
There's a big difference between the candidate you support not having the popular support of your neighbors and your state, and feeling like your vote has been pointless. Perhaps the candidates, Lord knows, I've supported plenty that haven't won, just don't make very good arguments. Maybe the population has a very different set of values, but to insinuate that this is a way of making your vote count, as if it doesn't already. Voting for losing candidates doesn't mean your vote doesn't count. And again, we are a union. We are a republic of states that aren't supposed to be stepping on each other, trying to dictate how the other one lives. There's supposed to be a separation of powers, and this is one of them. And finally, and I appreciate the time, the notion that this might be the only way that the Republican Party can somehow survive.
No, it just. Between two parties. It doesn't matter whether it's the other way.
I'll grant you just a few seconds to clarify what you meant when you were mentioning demographics in the cities and which way the votes are going to go.
Okay.
Did you care to clarify that?
Well, it wouldn't matter to me whether you were the Whig Party or the whatever party. But when you look at the numbers, when you have one party that automatically, under our electoral system, whether it's the Democrats or Republicans, the independents, whoever it is, already based on 40 years of data, and 40 years of election results, and 40 years of history, when one party, regardless of who that is, starts out with so many electoral votes, and one is way underneath, and if one of the big states of the 12 states decides to go with a party that, you know, is trending towards the party that's in the majority, if a presidential election starts, and one party, whether it's whoever it is, is already off the back, going to have those electoral votes from the start, I don't think that's fair for the rest of all the smaller states that really don't have a say. Right now, in the United States, maybe I'm not explaining it as well as I should be, and this is a conversation that is very detailed and deserves much more attention than I'm giving it right now. The 12 states elect our president, the big 12 states. And I don't think that's right. That's why I want to give other smaller states an opportunity to really have a say. And this is just one of the ways that can be, this can be done.
Well, let's consider this.
And I, we can't, let's, I'm going to have a forum on this. I'm going to come. We can debate it.
Mike, just real quick, you mentioned states, you mentioned cities, you mentioned I get in a fair shake. If you look at the top 50 cities population-wise in this country, that makes up over 50 million people. Now, whether or not they vote, that's a different issue. But you're not going to find any of the Connecticut cities anywhere close to those top 50.
But if you look at the top 200 cities, the numbers, I know it seems counterintuitive. If you look at the top 200 cities in the United States, it makes up 15% of the popular vote. That's it. We have this idea that the big cities are going to be the ones determining it. When you look at the popular vote, it only makes up 15%. The top 200 cities in the United States. And then that gives all the rest of us an opportunity to really have a say. Like I said, this may never go through in my lifetime. This may never see the light of day. But I think it's worth the conversation. If people don't want it, it has to come back to the states to be ratified anyway. It's the beginning of a conversation. And I just think it's important that everybody have a fair say in who they want to be our president in the United States. We elect every other office that way. It's just something to think about, and it's something that was going to happen, whether we as Republicans supported it or not. So I think it's worthy of further conversation. I'm actually going to set up forums in the next two weeks, and we can talk about it in detail, as far as how it works, how it's meant to be. There's two different ways to look at it, just like there's two different ways to look at the Electoral College that we have now. And, you know, the idea of constitutionality, that's debated by people that are obviously constitutional experts. But there are many people that are constitutional experts that have looked at this and said it's well within our constitutional rights to take a look at it. So I think we should move on to another. I'll be happy to invite you to that.
MBR.
Yep.
I heard that there was a bill passed on MBR.
There's a couple bills that passed on MBR. MBR is the Minimum Budget Requirement. There were some towns, unlike Plainfield, you only reduced your budget by the amount of, the budget that was reduced in the allocation portion. Other people reduced theirs by the allocation plus what the governor held back. And those folks were going to be fined, because they shouldn't have done that. By law, you're only supposed to reduce your MBR by the allocated amount. And there was a bill passed so that those folks who reduced their budgets, including the holdbacks, would not be fined. That was the MBR bill that passed.
Canterbury is a great example. I think you kind of did that, initiated.
Okay. I'm not very familiar with the topic, but a friend of mine asked me to ask the question.
It's like Fox News Channel. They have the questions coming in.
It's difficult to understand why a town cannot cut BOE spending just because the state gets more ECS funding. In Plainfield, it is close to a 50-50 split between state and local tax funding. We did put in approximately 17 and a half million towards school funding in Plainfield. Why is it that the town can't cut, say, $500,000, because it is a MBR violation according to our superintendent, or are we being misled?
Now, you, your budget, you spent, well, you should be happy. I got you another $2 million this year, right? But if your budget was $30 million.
Yeah, but we paid you.
You should get a reduction.
Proportionally.
You should. So, anyway.
It's proportional.
So if your, if your budget was $30 million for your school, you can't go below $30 million next year. That's the law. Because years ago, the state was giving towns money, and the state, the towns were using it for other things besides. using it for other things besides education. So the legislature years ago said, if we give you $15 million and your school budget is 30, you can't go below that. That's why. I made that mistake when I was Mayor of Groton. I put a $400,000 roof in our budget, and then the next year, I thought I could reduce by 400,000, because I didn't need the roof, you know, I was paying the roof, and they said, nope, sorry, it's in your budget now. So people learn the hard way. But you can take a slight reduction, but that's based on declining population. So if you have, and I think you're, actually, your population did decline. I think it's about, less than 3,000, but it depends on the performance of the school, and then you can take a slight reduction.
How would you take, how would you, how would you take care of that $400,000 roof?
Now, you put in...
With 2020 vision out.
What I did is I, we started a capital improvement project, and so we set it aside.
Okay, so you don't even pay your budget?
You have a separate line item, and then that's not part of your MBR. And that's why, there was a conversation that came up here, I remember when we were sitting, where you had grant money, and you could either use the grant money for something, or you were gonna take it out of your general fund and add it towards your school budget. And we've all said, don't take it out of your general fund, because, and add it to your school budget, because then it'll count towards your MBR next year, which is the grant money.
We were all hearing this pretty intense movement, you know. And I just wanna say that Heather didn't get the $2 million, and I had nothing to do with it at all. All Heather.
The education, I'm going to come up with that.
But we all vote for those things, and that's, you know, we all work in our own little aspects of this whole process. But I just wanted, can I go back to you for one second, and now to go back into what your topic was? The six-out-of-10 rule, and I'm gonna kind of hit home a little bit, is a lot of what you feel, I know I've listened to you talk over the years, we're all on the same page, right? There's gonna be one or two little items here that we're gonna have big disagreements. And maybe this one item's big to you. And we had a lot of internal debate on this conversation, in the House and the Senate. A lot of people were challenged with what to do. But I will tell you, in my experience, and it's very easy for me to talk open, because I'm not running again. It is easy, right? But the bottom line is this, this is, we don't design the agendas in Hartsford, it's designed by the control party of politics, right? These conversations are forced upon us, for political motivation. And I hate to be like that, I have a lot of great friends who are Democrats, I love Democrats, I don't agree with their agenda sometimes, and I don't agree sometimes with the Republican agenda. But we did not set the agenda. Bone stock was for a reason. Every one of these things were for a reason, to get these conversations going on right here, and deter from actually fixing Connecticut's future. And I just wanna throw that out there as sort of a, you know, we can have that for the conversation, but as a takeaway, that's my observation. We juggled many balls this year, to debate hours and hours and hours, to be in this very room, for us to be forced to answer these questions. And so, you know what? Let's take the six-out-of-10 things we agree on, and let's march forward for Connecticut tomorrow.
And I'd like to add to that, there's many bills that, you know, you really have to read them, don't buy the title, listen to the arguments on the floor, listen to the complete testimony before you really make a decision, because honestly, you often go in there thinking one thing, and you're convinced of another, when you get in there, when you start hearing people stand up and testify on different sides of the aisle, cases why and why not to support a bill. And sometimes there's parts of a bill that you like, and sometimes there's parts that you don't, so you end up making a decision, okay, well, I really don't like this, so I'm not gonna stand by it. But sometimes there are good things in a bill that you end up voting against or supporting either way, and you're gonna find ugliness in one part of it or something that you like. So just as a freshman, and I know Kevin and I, well, we're all freshmen actually, but I learned that many bills have a title that don't really say what's in the bill. So don't assume that if it has a title, it means what's in it. And oftentimes, it takes a lot to, you know, I commend Heather, I mean, maybe we disagree on MPV, but she really believes that, and she stood up and voted against it, and that's not easy to do. It's not easy to get, to vote against your own party, or perhaps all the people on the floor, but ask people why, rather than asking her why. And we may not agree with her on all things, and I think Kevin made that point, but ask, and, you know, let's explain why. So I just wanted to throw that in there, as freshman year, it's a big learning curve to get what's coming at you, where it's coming, you learn that you don't really have the control you think you do. I think, they both spoke to it, that much of, everything that comes at us at the floor, most of it is not put in by us, most of it is put in by the majority party. So, you know, we have to make decisions on it, you know, bill by bill, oftentimes, bills are stripped on the floor, we get them at the last minute, and we have to make last-minute decisions on 20-page, 50-page bills, so it's not an easy thing to do.
The other thing I will say on the National Popular Vote, is that's something that was not, was agreed to, that was not going to come up. Myself and other fellow Republicans had met intensely on it, we had given our word to somebody, it came up, I don't wanna go against my word when I tell somebody. But that was a bill that was not supposed to come up, and it came up. It was put on the floor on a Saturday, when we were down senators, so it was gonna get passed, whether we voted for it or not. And that's also true for other things, like you said, bone stocks. And people will say, why are you guys talking about this stuff? Again, the majority party controls what is heard. And so if they wanna pull something out, they're gonna pull it out. So you are sort of, you don't have the control to say, we're not going to hear that, that was an agreement that was made, but it was, the agreement was violated, let's say, on that one. And, you know, Saturday afternoon, and the two days before the session's open, when you're down senators on our side, that was a nice time to bring it out. But that, that's the other thing, dynamic that goes on top of this whole level. We talked about, you know, some of us may agree 50% of the time, 60% of the time, we also take into account our districts. And on certain bills, I heard overwhelmingly from my district, please support it one way or the other. Not sometimes, not, you know, from Plainfield necessarily, but from many of the other districts, sometimes from Plainfield a lot, so you take those into account too, when you make your decisions. I will say, we were able to stop a lot of bills that I thought were really bad, because of our split. We did it by putting amendments on things. And I'll give you one that I thought was particularly bad, which was submitted by Mae Flexer, and it happened to do with requiring additional polling places at institutions of higher education during elections. Meaning, if you're a college student, you can't get in your car and go to Town Hall and vote. They wanted to put a voting booth right in the middle of the college campus. Now, to me, I have people that are 90 years old in walkers, that will come out to the, in their district. If you're a college kid and you wanna vote, and you can't go downtown, for me, there's no excuse. So what I did on that one is I amended it with the gun range bill, the gun range amendment. Now, here's something that was sort of interesting, I had an amendment out on the gun range in Griswold that I know you're probably all aware of, and one of the things that I wanted to bring out was what I considered a significant ethics violation on how this entire thing was handled. And as you may or may not know, the property was sold to the state by someone who works in the Secretary of State's office, and it was sold at five times the market value. So one of the things that I wanted to bring out was this ethics amendment, which basically said, any parcel real properly owned by a state employee, as defined by what a state employee is, shall have any closing of sale. I think there had to be public comment on it, there also had to be a decision in 15 days, and it had to make sure that whatever this property was sold for was sold for a reasonable price. At the end of the session, the bills that were gonna be coming out started to get crazier and crazier. So I amended 21 bills with this amendment. I wanted to be able to talk about this on the floor. Every one of those 21 bills that's on our agenda was pulled off the agenda, because they did not wanna talk about this. So that's some of the things that you can do to stop something. Unfortunately, I didn't think of this, I'm doing the other ones.
Can I share with Heather's story? Because I might know a little intimately about the story, being the first electorate in the town of Griswold, having dealt with it. Heather did phenomenal work in the Senate, because she did force a vote on a bill, this bill, that caused a couple senators locally, Mae Flexer and Kathy Austin, who had gone out, spoken to the folks of keep Griswold quiet, the people who are concerned, and guaranteed they supported them, but in fact, at the end of the day, they killed this bill. They killed the bill. The bill that would've came to the House to actually give us a vote, they killed, because they voted party politics that night. And Kathy, who I'm friends with, disagree with often, she made a real big decision that night, she decided to really turn her back, and so did Mae Flexer on our communities, because we're all gonna be affected by this process. By the way, taxpayers, you know, what Heather brings up here, there's already a real estate review board, is priority funding locations? These are things that are in law, that we brought up during public hearings, that we had, and the state of Connecticut is violating each and every time. And I'm gonna tell you where it goes back to. It goes back to affiliations with high donors, from the Avon Mountain area, people who paid a lot of money to elections, who want this property out of their town, because they wanna make it into a polo ground. That's a fact, that's a fact, Jack, I'm gonna tell you all day long, and it's 100% pure honesty. And they will not quit to get it out of there. The one good thing, and Heather can attest to this, and we worked with a really brave lady from Greenwich, Libby Form, state representative, who went to battle with the bonding commissioner, she's co-chair of the bonding note, and she took all the money out of the bonding note, so there's no money to finish the patch on the range. The governor will leave office, and he will not accomplish his goal. And the commissioner of DAS for the Navy Office did not be able to accomplish her goal. Now, they're gonna come out for June 5th to the town of Griswold for a scoping meeting, to try to sell us a bunch of goods, and they don't have any money, so I don't know how, maybe, you know, we can try to summarize how they're gonna do this. There's no money in the line item to do it at the start.
And so just all you, all you know, we were both on public safety. Testimony after testimony after testimony spoke about options all over the state for gun ranges that were far better, that served them far better than this, and we believe there were dirty deals made to sell that land. And again, you know, you, until you're able to expose that and let everybody understand what really went on there, if you look at it superficially, from the surface, you'd need to understand really what went on. But we heard tons of testimony, over and over and over again, about options all over the state. People wanting it in their town, people having the property put on their town.
No one wants it.
And so, and so here we are with a town that doesn't want it, that's taking over forest lands, I understand, right? And it was a, it was a deal made behind back doors to sell that property, and I'm just saying, that there's a lot more to a lot of these bills than meets the eye when you're looking at them, so, you know, we're happy to be here.
I looked at over 200 properties, the state of Connecticut owns a lot of properties, but I looked, I isolated the empty mothball correctional facility. So I took, for example, we brought it up there in the hearing, J.B. Gates in Niantic. It has highway background noise, it's got nine or 10, maybe 15 buildings on the property, a huge chameleon that could do, into a shooting with. All they have to do is switch it over from one department to the next, with no cost. It has razor wire, it's convenient, but they didn't look at it.
Well, and I was gonna add that just the cost to the taxpayers, that this deal went down, costing the taxpayers potentially millions of dollars, when there was no need for it. So there was other options that would've, like I think Kevin just pointed out, would've costed us nothing, virtually nothing.
So just so you know, the, what happened is, I'm the vice chair of environment, and because this property is surrounded by three sides of state forest, I decided to put an amendment on a bill that I knew everybody wanted, which was for trails, et cetera. And the amendment said that the, upon closing on this property, that the property that was destined for this gun range would be immediately transferred to the Department of Environment and Protection, because they had wanted the property, they didn't have the funding at the time. And it passed unanimously, because everyone in environment had to vote for it, because it is the environmentally something to do. So that passed unanimously, and when the bill went forward, what happened is they split the bill, so my bill was standing alone, and the same people that voted for it in environment ended up voting against it in the Senate. So it was a party-line vote, the lieutenant governor casting the tie vote, no. So, you know, ironically, all the Republicans supported it, all the Democrats did not support it. And those Democrats had supported it in the Environment Committee, which was really too bad, because it was a perfect example of party-line politics. And then that's when it was clear that we really needed to make people aware that this property was assessed at $240,000, and it is being sold for $1.1 million. That's your tax rate that would work, in a town that doesn't want it, with money we don't have, in a gun range we don't need. Even Joe Courtney came and testified on my behalf, and Congressmen do not normally meddle in state politics, like we don't normally meddle on the local level, because that's not what we're supposed to do. And he, you know, basically got the permission of the National Guard facility in East Haven that had just gotten a $15 million upgrade, and they have 222 days of capacity for use. The state police could certainly use that facility, they have the ability to do so, but again, the administration wants it in the middle of a patch on the state forest. So that's where we are, but those are some of the things that, you know, if you just read the title of the bill, as Ann said, you wouldn't really know what the underlying is. And the other day, I just wanted to share this with you, the title of the bill on TV was a study to, boy, it was a study to study teen youth at risk, right? That was the title on the TV, but somebody had done a strike-all amendment, so that's not the bill we were arguing on. And there was people up there saying, this is a horrible bill, how could you bring this out, how could you even think about it? When the title says, you know, trying to study about youth at risk. So whoever's watching it is saying, what are these people talking about? So you really have to get the bill and read it to understand exactly what's in that bill before you can judge exactly, which I know is hard to do, but if you have any questions, you can call us, and whether you agree with us or not, we can tell you honestly what the bill says and what it does. So I know it's time to wrap up here, but thank you all for coming out, and we will leave our contact information if you wanna talk further about anything specifically, we're happy to do that. And I just got a message, she said, and I was fully funded, and she will verify that tomorrow, my budget expert in transportation, so.
Just gotta get back to the conversation. Anybody else, any wrap-up questions? I know Heather's gotta go to another point, anybody?
Sounds good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.